Okay, so seven o'clock, we're gonna go ahead and call our meeting to order and then pledge of allegiance, Tony.
All right, I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag. Okay, perfect. Kate, did we have any citizens comments or people here that have any comments that they would like to make?
I did not receive anything.
Okay.
And I don't know if there's.
Yeah, we have a couple of community members. If there's anyone that has any comments now would be in the opportunity to make those. All right, seeing or hearing no comments at this point, we will move on to the spotlight on Brentwood.
All right, good evening, everyone. Thanks for being with us tonight. For a virtual spotlight on Brentwood, hopefully this is the only one we'll have to do or do it sparingly. So as you know, we split these up into our four categories of our strategic priorities and objectives. So let's get into it. Our first one is student success. So the first one we have when talking about like innovative personalized learning experiences and things like that. This is a great example at Brentwood Middle School, seventh graders worked in teams to design, build and program robot dragsters. This hands-on activity is part of Sarah Pfeiffer's Project Lead the Way course, which explores the science behind mechanical systems and energy transfers, machine automation and computer control systems. So basically, students use the VEX robotics platform to create dragsters capable of both acceleration and then precision to stop as close to a blue tape line on the floor that they can get. So after weeks of work, they've been working on this for a long time. And if you've been in the high school and you've walked through the hallways, you've seen the taped lines, you've seen them out there practicing, fine tuning, tweaking, things like that. So lots of lots of small detail and precision went into this. So they they put their machines to the test in a head-to-head competition as part of the school's annual robot drag race. So this is something they do every year. It's really cool. This was a bigger class. The seventh grade class is a bigger class, so they had more rounds of races. They actually had in each heat, there were four. And I think there were five heats maybe, and then they whittle it down and but just a good example of, you know, personalized, innovative, future-ready learning at Brentwood Middle School. All right, so our next one is, as much as we like innovative and and future-ready things, there's also some staples that we like to keep, and that's the spelling bee. So these two young men right here, let's start with the young man on the left. That's Mark Twain Elementary School, fifth grader Adi Burke. And last month, he secured his third consecutive spelling bee crown after an impressive 26-round competition. Very cool to witness that. They just kept going back and forth. It was down between him and another student. It was just back and forth, back and forth for at least 10 or 12 rounds. So very impressive. Then the the young man on the right, McGrath Elementary School, fifth grader Aiden Tran won his second consecutive spelling bee. So we just want to congratulate our these two super spellers and then everyone that participated. Great events for the schools. Having families in the building to watch them, to to cheer them on, you know, parents and and supporters with their phones out recording. It was just a just a cool event to see one of those staples. And then, of course, our third one, you know, a spotlight on Brentwood wouldn't be wouldn't be the same without award-winning art from our high school. So I think we have something every month, but we want to also congratulate our incredibly talented art three and art four students whose work was selected for the 2025 Young Artist Showcase at the St. Louis Artist Guild. There were 400 entries in this highly competitive exhibition. And these four student artists captivated the guest judge with their creativity and skill, earning a place in the showcase. So just from, we'll start off with in the top left. Helen Nguyen, that the name of that piece is Lake Huron Sunset. And then below that, Leah Durham, a heart of cooling magma surrounded by water. Then in the middle, Clarity's Bluff, and then to the or that and that's Jess Fallon. And then to the right, Noah Schultz is that Iceland pony. So their work will be on display at the St. Louis Artist Guild from February 28 through March 29. And just as always, a thanks to Tim Rempel for everything he does to find opportunities for students to be recognized. He he's very plugged into the local art scene and he's able to find ways to get our students recognized and showcase all the talent that our students are able to create. So very impressive. All right, so moving on to school culture, and this is another staple, another fun one. Mark Twain and McGrath Elementary School students reached a major milestone earlier this month, the 100th day of school. At McGrath, kindergarteners marched their way into triple digits with a special parade, bringing smiles and cheers from students and staff as they line the hallways. Classrooms also participated in 100 themed fun as students put their math skills to the test, proving that they were 100 days smarter. So you see in the top right and bottom left, those two students working on counting activities. Those were led by McGrath Math Interventionist Erin Hubert. And just a shout out to her, she recently earned her math specialist certification. So she had tons of different things for kids to count. Letter tiles, paper clips, clothespins, pencils, and kids and kids were supposed to count them. It was the 100th day of school, but not all of them had 100 in them. They were supposed to count them and then let her know what they came up with and and if that was the correct answer. So it was neat to see kids and how they organize things and, you know, they did they do them by fives? Did they do them by tens? You know, stacking them in rows, stacking them in piles, but very cool to see a nice staple of school culture at McGrath. And then moving on to diversity, equity, inclusion and accessibility. This photo is one of many door decorations at Brentwood High School honoring Black History Month and this year's theme of African Americans and labor. And this celebrates the pivotal role that and the hard work of African Americans have played in shaping our country's history. And this door specifically is the counseling student services door. So Melody Tomaclo and Emily Diaz putting together a nice representation of African Americans and their impact on different fields and highlighting. So before the end of the month, this month of February, each of our schools will host some kind of Black History Month events. A lot of them are scheduled for next week. You know, if it's STEM challenges, walkthroughs with different exhibit or exhibits and things like that. But one of the ones we really want to highlight, the Brentwood Early Childhood Center's Celebration of Belonging, and that's Thursday, February 27 from 5:37. So if you're able to attend that, it's in the multipurpose room at BECC. It's a great example of all the different cultures and fostering a sense of belonging and appreciation for the diversity in our community. All right, and then then two more under Unified Community Engagement. So the first one, we love this guy. Brentwood School Resource Officer Amir Habibavich has been named the City of Brentwood Police Officer of the Year, recognizing his exceptional dedication, community engagement and contributions to both the Brentwood School District and the broader community. Officer Habibavich, and as we like to call him Officer Hobby, and that's if you meet him, that's the first thing he'll say is to call me Hobby. He goes above and beyond in his role as SRO, fostering meaningful relationships with students while enhancing school safety. You know, he does hot cocoa with Officer Hobby. He participates in the middle school career fair. He's one of the the more popular ones, I would say. It's very, it's very interactive, showing kids how to how to conduct and investigate a crime scene. He he gets out his radar gun and the kids run down High School Drive and to see how fast they're running. And he also brings donuts, so that might be another reason why he's one of the more popular middle school career day ones, but just a a great person and a great way to recognize him. And we're lucky to have him in our schools and everything he does for our students and staff and community and keeping our school safe. So and then our last one. And this was last month as well. Brentwood's annual chili cook-off brought the heat last month as student, staff and families gathered for a night of friendly competition. There were 23 homemade chili recipes, so attendees were able to sample all 23 and then cast their vote for which one they liked the best. And after all the votes were tallied, Kim Gerhardt's chili contender was the winner of the Golden Spoon Award for a third consecutive year. A lot of like back-to-back-to-backs in this month's spotlight. So the third consecutive year that she had won the Golden Spoon at the Chili Cook-Off. So not only was this a great community event, it also raised $1,100 for the Gateway 180 Homeless Services to further their mission of ending homelessness. So just a a little small taste of what happened between our last meeting. If you guys have any questions, feel free, but always a pleasure to to highlight good things that are happening in our community.
Thank you, Tony. This is always a highlight of our meetings, too. Those are wonderful updates on Brentwood. So then that will move us into our meeting. Kate, if we would do roll call for us, please.
Mark Cicero. Ryan Dodson.
Yes.
Ryan Flynn.
Here.
Keith Rebenberg.
Here.
Katie Spall.
Here.
Lindsay Spencer.
Here.
Carrie Trossell.
Here.
Great, thank you. If we could have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as outlined.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Great. But that will move us into our superintendent's report.
Great. First up, I have Mr. Andy Hartnett, who I have to give a huge shout out to because he was out driving the streets of Brentwood at about 3:45, 3:50 when he got my first text to see how things are going. So when I give a huge shout out, I know he's had a very long day. So thank you for being here tonight. But his first item on the agenda is the HVAC for Building C.
Good evening, everybody. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Yep, we can.
Okay. I apologize if I'm a little bit off. It's been a long day. But we want to, we wanted to put this in front of the board tonight. We, as I've been talking about in several board meetings previously, we were working on upgrading the HBAC and Building C, which is the main level of the north wing of the high school. We've been working on this for some time. We wanted to try to get some more bids through through some different partnerships, but it just wasn't quite working out the the way we wanted it to. It was gonna take quite some time to get the engineering done. And there were some other questions out there as well. However, Dyken did bring us a proposal through the Omni Partnership over the summer time to replace a a unit that was not replaced during the renovations. This unit that is currently there has been quite a drag on our operations budget to keep it running over the last few years. We're kind of on its last leg. We're wanting to try to get this done this summer. We we are kind of, the window is going to be closing here if we don't actually make a decision on if we're gonna do it or not. It is a Dyken unit which matches all the other units at Brentwood High School currently. It will run on the current HVAC system that we have, the current automation system. It will basically be just kind of a turnkey situation. The last three projects that we've had over the summer and the fall have been through Dyken. And they have all gone very, very swimmingly. They've been a pretty good partner in the last year. And we've had great service through them even. And it's a new unit. And I will say that there could possibly be problems with it. There just always are. Little kinks to be to be worked out, but they are always very responsive and they they always make things right. So basically, this this unit, it's not only the unit, but it's all it also includes all the electrical work, the ceiling grid work that will need to be replaced and the new VAV systems. And they will come in at darn it, I'm sorry. It's been a couple of years since I've done one of these virtual things.
You're in good company.
Trying to get used to it. But it comes in at $471,356. I would recommend that we try to move forward with this ASAP so we can make sure we get it done by summer. It will that will definitely help with our operating budget. It will come out of capital, which we've already accounted for. And we will also get some Ameren rebates out of it. The current unit that that is up there has almost no efficiency. It it's great. It runs really well when it's running well. But when it's not running, it it is quite a disturbance to our learning process. So does anybody have any questions?
I think, well, if we could do a motion to approve this first, and then we can jump into questions.
Sure.
Yeah, I make a motion that we approve the BHS Building HVAC System as outlined.
Second.
Right, discussion.
So I guess I've got a couple of questions, Andy. So first, you you mentioned this is a brand-new HVAC system and I bet the budget's almost a half a million dollars. Is, I know other HVAC systems for other types of buildings, you can sometimes get used HVAC systems that may not be towards the end of their life, but maybe they have half of a lifetime span on them. Is that something that you guys considered or is that possible for a 30-ton unit?
We didn't really consider that because we're trying to get a full life out of out of this equipment, especially when we're using capital funds. If you say you use a, if you have a unit that's used, you don't quite exactly know what the lifespan is going to be. It's harder to gauge.
Sure.
You know, you want to give it, you know, 15 years is a pretty good lifespan for a unit like that. And that's and that's just the rooftop unit. This this includes the VAVs as well that will go into each room, which could last longer. We don't know. They should last longer. So we did not consider a used option.
Okay. And I noticed that the contract was in July of 2024. Is it still, is this proposal still valid or has it expired?
It is still valid.
Okay. And then I guess my last question as I went through it. From a project management standpoint, it sounds like walls will be opened up. And, you know, is there, I guess, what are the risks with that? I think we learned, hopefully, we learned a lot during our first go-around of renovations, but there is that unexpected. So while this project, it looks like the project budget is, you know, 400 some odd thousand, $471,000. What is the true project budget for this? Being unknowns.
Sure, sure. So that this includes everything. However, so what I will say is in 2019 and 2020, we opened everything up where this project is happening. So it's already been opened up. So ceilings are have been replaced, et cetera, et cetera. We we know what's there now. I hate to, I hate to promise anything. I don't promise anything, but the risk is more minimal going in to this project as far as finding anything like asbestos that we don't know about, things like that. It's kind of what I'm, I figure your question is aimed at.
Yeah, it might. Yeah, my question is aimed at, you know, you know, opening up walls, finding new things, but then also closing up those walls afterwards. That didn't look like that was part of the project budget either.
No, it it is. It's it's and it it only really involves ceilings and and that's just replacement of the ceilings that are taken out to do the project.
Okay.
So that that's all covered, yes.
Gotcha. And how many other?
That was actually one of the things I was more concerned about. Obviously, the functionality, but also buttoning it back up.
Yeah, okay. Yeah. Any risk to the roof? Or finding anything else out?
No, so the roof, it's it's going to probably sit on a different piece that will, it's like a flange that will go on top of the existing hole. So whatever that is, it will all be sealed up. It will, it will be fine. We are also aiming to complete a project this summer with the shingled roof that is surrounding that area, but it should not impact that.
Okay. But is that part of the the budget, this project budget, or is that part of a different capital br-?
That's the the roof is a different capital project, yes.
Okay. And how many other quotes, proposals did you guys get and had you land on?
So so we saw three. And we we had interest in a second quote. However, the engineering was just not quite there with what we were looking for. Could we have gotten the engineering? Yes, but the timeframe was going to be really tight and we are just not quite. I don't feel comfortable in going another year with with not ha- with not having this thing replaced.
Okay. And what, I'm sorry, just I'm rambling questions off, so please interrupt me, anybody, but what is the from acceptance of the proposal? When would the first day of the project start and what is estimated completion date?
So they give you kind of a loose, loose guess, but it would probably be towards July would be the start and completion. Completion is actually not that bad. Once they get on it, they get on it and it takes a few weeks to get it completed. So we would probably be close to when we start school in the in the 25 school year, 25, 26 school year. But we we would definitely have it done before then.
Was the um, the other one that you were hoping that would work out, but just engineering just wasn't? How much was it, was the difference between that bid and this bid?
Well, so we didn't, they didn't finish the bid to get it to get it in. That was the issue was without doing all the extra footwork, they they couldn't give us a number. A solid number.
Okay.
So are we selling our existing unit back to them or do we get?
No.
What does that work? Because, you know, typically I've seen that with other HVAC units. You can you sell, you can sell used ones that still have some life left. I know this is definitely a different scale, but.
Yeah, so so this unit was built in like 1994. It has zero life left. I mean, we are just like chugging this thing along. The only value that it has to it is scrap. And typically with everything in these kinds of projects, what the contractor does is they build the price into what the scrap they will get from that unit. So when they remove it, that's, it's basically theirs.
Okay.
So Andy, you mentioned Ameren rebates. Do you know kind of what those will look like for us?
I'm not sure yet. However, we are working on those for the gym units that we just replaced, which are working really well. It's been like zero headache the last few months with those things being in there. It's been, it's been nice, but I'm not quite exactly sure what that's going to look like. But I know that we kind of pay into kind of like a co-op with with our energy sources, so it's going to be something that we work with Matt Norrod on as well.
Great.
So I guess.
Go ahead.
Yeah, sorry, just last couple of questions. So will this interfere with anything? The central office, anything going on with Ann Summer School during the summer?
The only impact that it may have is with summer school if 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 there's an intention to use that particular floor during the summer, which I don't think would be a hard thing to to run.
We should be able, yeah, we'd be able to work around it. We don't have a large enough.
Yeah.
Okay.
In the way that it's designed, that we can work around that easily.
Okay. And I and I hope that if we do get this approved, that we would go back to them and and state that we have a very hard deadline to have this completed prior to the start date of school for our students. Is that feasible to do?
I think so. And and they've actually been pretty responsive with with the gym units that we that we replaced. It was a hey, we need this done by this time before this date hits, before it starts getting cold. And I mean, they kept me updated every couple of weeks. Hey, this is where this unit is in production. We're tracking it to be here at this date. So their their communication is pretty good about that.
Okay. Yeah, I just, I would hope that if something does happen, because it sounds like the timeline is really, really tight right now, that for whatever reason, let's say the unit can't come in until August or September. Are we then left to wait until we have, you know, winter break or, you know, spring break to do the installation?
Right. If if there is a holdup, yes, we would probably have to wait until we have a break. That is correct.
Okay.
Right. Any other questions? Oh, go ahead, Amy.
No, I was just gonna say, and we'd keep the board updated, just like we did with the last one. You know, it's, you know, Andy kept me very updated as to it's in production, it's in, you know, as the process went along. So we would keep the board updated if if that would happen.
And of course, if there was any kind of delay, we would definitely be reasonable with with how we schedule this thing to be done. I mean, you know, things do happen, so.
But we could get things rolling, I guess, if this is approved, starting tomorrow.
Is this, is this the low, I mean, it's the winter time now. July was obviously, it was very hot and pricing for air conditioners in July is usually a little bit more expensive than it is in the wintertime. Is there any difference in price potential if we go back to them and ask?
I don't think so necessarily. I mean, it it wouldn't hurt to ask, but but yeah, no, I don't think so. We have had a few things that we've been purchasing lately that have come in a little bit under what we thought, which is somewhat surprising, but I don't think it would be like exponentially cheaper.
Yeah, I get it. Yep. Okay.
Okay, um, so for the board to approve the new HVAC system, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that is approved. Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Next up, I have Matt and Joe with Navigate, um, here to give us an update on phase two. Um, and this has been in the weekend update, um, with the ADA compliant sidewalks. And they're here to just kind of talk us through the, um, process, because this was a little bit a bigger of a change and something that kind of happened at the last minute. And so we wanted to make sure that you, they were here and available to answer questions and kind of present where we, where we are. So Matt and Joe, I will turn it over to you. Uh, you can just let Tony know as you need to go to the next slide and he will, uh, advance the slides for you.
All right, great. Thank you very much. And thanks for having us. Yeah, like Dr. Zlunzy said, we're, uh, just gonna hear, you know, give you guys an update on Prop E, uh, the bond projects and, uh, wrapping up this last phase, which is the McGrath site work. Uh, so with that, we've got a little presentation. As Amy said, we, we had a, uh, you know, run in with a sidewalk onsite. And so we'll go through some of the details and then give you guys an overview of where financially we are with all the bond projects. And that, and that such. So, uh, like Amy said, uh, with me tonight is Joe Voipick. He's the project manager that's running the phase two project. And he can, uh, start us off and kind of run us through this and be here to answer any questions.
Yep. Thanks for the introduction, Matt, and, uh, good to meet all of you, uh, getting close to the end of this project. So nice to put some faces to the board, uh, at least once before it's over. Uh, if you don't mind, uh, hopping to the next slide. Um, like Matt mentioned, we're gonna hit on McGrath phase two, which is under construction. And one, um, change that's arisen in the last couple of weeks at that project, uh, and then hit an overall budget update. Uh, next slide, please. So generally, uh, the progress at McGrath site, um, the ECC playground installation is due to be complete this spring twenty twenty five. Uh, if you've been at that building, uh, the play structure is up. All the foundations and, uh, play implements are, are in place. The only thing that's remaining is the pour in place surfacing. Unfortunately, due to some early weather, uh, and temperatures, we were not able to get that surfacing laid down. Due to temperatures being too low for that stuff to set up properly. So we're, we're waiting for a good spell of weather here. Obviously not this week. But, uh, we, we're looking forward to getting that completed. Uh, and then in general, the larger project in whole, um, there's been lots of progress. Really around, uh, Christmas break, uh, the site road had the base course of asphalt laid. Where we have the pavilion up, and I've got photos of this just a little bit later in the presentation. But unfortunately, as we're preparing to pour some sidewalks that would connect, the, the west side road down to the ECC, uh, we hit a snag with the city inspector. He threw the red flag, uh, the day of the pour and mentioned that we are grading wasn't in accordance with ADA standards. Uh, so if you don't mind hopping to the next slide, I'm talking here about the sidewalk that approaches the U eight soccer field there on the left. The far left. So that sidewalk that goes down the hill and around the curve, we got paused, um, and had to readdress with the architect, with the general contractor and with the city to really figure out why this is happening, uh, why it wasn't caught during plan review. And ultimately bring this topic to you, because it is, does have cost implications. Being that we were about to pour, uh, the general contractor has some rework. Um, and ultimately a large quantity of handrail, uh, required to bring this sidewalk into compliance. The end result is ADA access from the ECC wing of your building all the way up to the U eight soccer field. If you don't mind hitting the next slide, this is just a little highlight of the area of the sidewalk that I'm talking about. So, um, this scope is along with some permeable pavers and other miscellaneous items, the last scope remaining prior to spring break. On spring break, we will proceed with final pavement, uh, some striping and get the whole site cleaned up and turned over to you. But this piece is, is the last sort of dilemma that we have in front of us. So I'm happy to go into any of the specifics regarding, uh, the timeline, where we think that we missed in the plan review or any other questions we may have. Uh, I can take this now or after the end of the presentation.
Do you have a understanding as to why this happened with the sidewalk? And is the city right in its conclusion that it wasn't compliant?
The city is right in its conclusion. I'm getting some feedback.
Problems understanding what he's saying.
Um, yeah, there's some feedback there. So I guess if you are not using your mic, if we could, just put them on silence and maybe that'll make it easier for the feedback. And then, um, before we jump into this, if I could just get a motion to approve, uh, the changes for phase two, and then we'll have discussion.
I make a motion to approve McGrath phase two updates for the ADA sidewalks as outlined.
Second.
Great discussion. So we can jump back into those details now, Joe.
Okay, so yes, the city's right. The sidewalk as originally designed was not up to ADA compliance. Originally, the intent of what is now being called the U eight soccer field was just an open grass field. Um, and so ADA access to just an open grass field was not deemed necessary at that time. Since its designation, the city is now requiring ADA access. And it was not caught on the plan review by the city. So at this point, uh, the issue was identified, the day of the pour, which unfortunately has some further cost implications due to rework. And there was another part to your question, I'm sorry.
Now, I think you answered my question. I, the, the two parts were, were, was the city correct in its conclusion about ADA? And, and what did you figure out as to why this happened? And I kind of think I understand that.
So does the soccer field also have to be accessible? Is this one giant handrail or fence that goes all the way down to the ECC? Or is there openings in there to ex- access the U eight soccer field?
Good question. Um, so the change entails a series of sloped sidewalk sections in flat, uh, landing platforms. They have to be every, at some iteration, every so often along the length to be compliant. And the handrail is on both sides of these sloped sections. So there, there's gaps at every landing.
Okay.
So how much did it cost us? And penal penalties, basically, because they were ready to pour and we couldn't let them pour that day?
It's hard to break that cost out specifically. I could dig into that and get you a more specific number, uh, because the way that they priced the change has the rework entailed along with the additional work to make the change. There was going to be rework in terms of grading, regardless. But the work that was tacked on due to a last minute recognition was really the concrete forming, uh, which had just been completed that morning.
So do you think it's also because it's ADA that we're trying to accommodate? Keith, back years ago, when we were trying to look at doing a driveway all the way around McGrath, I thought that, you know, as a district, you could do pretty much whatever you wanted, like, you know, the city can tell us what they, they would like. But in the end, we don't really have to ask permission. Am I wrong on that, Keith, or?
If you're asking me, I, I thought that's, I think that's accurate or may have been accurate. I, I don't remember where we came down on it. But I guess my viewpoint is if, if, um, if they're right that it needs to be done this different way to be ADA compliant, I think we want to do that regardless of whether the ci- city tells us to or not.
Correct.
So can I jump in here real quick? Starting with the Mark Twain project, the city basically obliged us to have to start complying with their requirements due to them wanting us to comply with their inspections. We never had to have inspections before. And now suddenly, uh, when the Mark Twain project started, they required us to get permits and do inspections. We were never required to get permits prior to the Mark Twain project. So even though the McGrath project went through phase one without permits, phase two had to go through a permitting process. Um, I will make a comment, eh, though as well that, um, the permitting process, uh, they have also waived the fees, which is a certain percentage of the project, just a quick background.
That was gonna be my next question, if there was any fees. But did we, did we have it drawn right the first time, but they didn't? Or we had it drawn wrong the first time? They didn't catch it and then they just caught it now?
Yes, it, it, I mean, it went through all the plan review processes. It's, it's gone through there twice to my knowledge. And, um, it had not been caught until the day of the pour.
I guess the only thing I would like us to do is at least share this information of the additional cost that it cost us as a district, because it really does cost the taxpayers money again. And even though it's not a lot of money, it's still additional money that takes away from other funds. And when we aren't accounting for expenses like this, you know, it just takes more money out and it just maybe moves our projection dates of when we have to go back to the taxpayers. So I, I do think we need to at least let them know what additional cost was to the district.
Joe, you can work on getting us that information and I can share it with the board if you can kind of get us in a ballpark.
Yeah, I, I have the, the final change order numbers I can get shot over to.
Yeah, we, yeah, and we'll follow up in the weekend update and then we can talk about that from there.
So, so I am curious as I, as I look at this too, you know, would, I guess, number one, would you have changed? Knowing what we know now, would the design be any different? Because as I look at it, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven staircases that, you know, we've, uh, when we get snow, that is gonna be a major pain to, uh, to, to clear. So I guess my question is, you know, where the slope declines the most between the U eight soccer field and the other field? You know, can that just be one level piece of concrete with one set of stairs that we only have to worry about?
So there are no sets of stairs. There's just sloped sections of sidewalk. And to answer your question, the revised grading plan, uh, i- is stretching the maximum slope allowable for ADA very thin. So to actually remove those slope sections adjacent to the soccer fields, not likely capable.
Okay. So, so how many, uh, staircases are there then? Any? Or am I, oh, there's not. Oh, I'm sorry, I thought.
There's slope. It's like that you slope and then it's a flat.
I think, I think Ryan, where the, what you're looking at, whether it's kind of discolored, those are of, of flat landing. So when, when it goes from a sloped sidewalk to a flat landing and that's where the, the handrails.
Oh, okay. I was thinking the way it was with, at the old McGrath, we'd had stair and then flat and then stairs again. So, okay, thank you for clarifying.
And, and we, we did work quite a bit on, um, what we could do to solve this issue. Um, and one of, one of the, one of the solutions or possible solutions was, well, can we put some parking spaces at the top of the, the drive lane? Um, however, um, the issue was how is this accessible from the actual building itself? Not from the parking lot. So if that, i- i- if that's a question, I just want to answer that right now.
Great. I mean, I do, obviously, we want to make sure that everyone can use this facility in these fields. So it's, it's good that we caught it here. What does it do for the timeline of having this completed?
So this scope of work is the predecessor to the final top and coat of asphalt, which is due to be put in on spring break. So the general contractor is confident that if we get the approvals after this meeting, that he can get this work barring the handrail installed before spring break. Um, they would likely come back after spring break to install the handrail, but they would be able to finish that asphalt road.
Okay, I haven't brought any other questions about this part of the project. Okay, I guess we can move on with the other updates.
But, yeah, the other parts of your presentation, Joe?
Yes, thank you. So next, I've just got a couple of photos of the McGrath phase two site. Here you can see the, the asphalt roadway coming down the hill, uh, and the retaining walls that went up around the perimeter. Uh, those gravel areas there on the left photo will be the permeable paver stalls, uh, your, your extended parking lot there. Next slide, please. These are a little outdated already, um, but the pavilion has gone up, uh, there on the left. Uh, it's got the sheathing on it now and the last thing remaining is roofing. Uh, and then on the right, you can see the playground at the ECC. It's all up minus the, the shade canopy, which isn't supposed to be up in the winter anyways, and the pour in place surfacing.
Hey, Joe, can I interrupt you real quick? I just want to talk a little bit more about the playground is, is, it, it, it's done in theory, however, we're still working on making sure, we have the fall zones calculated correctly. Is that right, Joe?
Yes.
And then also, eh, that's gonna, uh, well, once we get that figured out, that's when we can actually put the fence around it. And then once the fence is installed, we can put in the soft surface play area, uh, eh, eh, as long as the temperature is allowed. So go ahead, Joe. Sorry.
Yep. No, no worries. Next slide, please. That's all I have there. So next, I'd like to just go through an overview of the, um, bond issue budget overall. And, uh, I'll, I'll preface that when we get to the McGrath phase two sections, I've assumed that the cost of this change order we just discussed, uh, is accounted for, right? I'm spending that money in McGrath. So these numbers that you're gonna see are after that cost has been accr- uh, incurred. McGrath early site work in the new McGrath building, nothing's changed. Those have been closed out for quite some time. Mark Twain, you'll see that the owner contingency line has been reduced to zero. Um, that's a twofold reason. One, uh, we came to a final change order with ICS to get that project completely closed out. Uh, we don't have any other open change, uh, potential cost items, I should say. So just, uh, one last final change order to execute, uh, and that one will be closed out completely. There was additional funds left in that contingency amount. So to offset some of the costs using the Prop E money, we zeroed out the contingency. So to offset some of the costs using the prop E money, we zeroed out the contingency at Mark Twain. And pulled it back just as an overall propy contingency. So if you don't mind going to the next slide. You'll see the total cost, the total budget in the remaining contingency for the proposition as a whole. Forty one thousand dollars remaining after all of the costs associated with. Mark Twain's final change order. This ADA sidewalk change order. And every other potential item that we've identified so far that may not even have cost directly from the general contractor yet. But we've we've taken little pieces and reserved costs for some potential changes there. And we still have fifty, I'm sorry, forty one thousand dollars remaining on the property as a whole.
So I I just, can I just make a a quick comment here just to just to clarify, though? Our prop E budget was twenty nine million. And we did have some overages and and that's not your fault on this. You were given that. But just a point of clarity, our prop E budget that the voters approved was twenty nine million. So we got some of the additional seven million dollars from the sale of the. The central office and the ECC along with some additional funds from investments and other areas. So I think it's important just to be transparent with with the community that our propy budget. Was twenty nine million, not thirty six as as indicated.
Thank you. I I believe that's the last slide. If there are any other questions, I'd be happy to do my best answer.
Can we ask questions now or do we have to?
No, we're we're yes, we've already done the motion, so we are in discussion.
On the pavilion. Is there electric on the pavilion that's being put back at McGrath?
That's a good question that that I would honestly need to check back at the drawings to give you a correct answer on. I do not know that off the top of my head.
Okay, because it was. Before we took the pavilion down, it had electric run to it. And so we told. The people that we would return it to the exact same condition. So I want to make sure if it's not ran, that it gets ran before this is totally completed. Because that was paid for. I'm sorry.
I was just gonna ask if I could shoot Amy an update after I get a chance to look at those drawings, I'd love to answer your question.
And then also in front of. The early childhood playground, we had talked about having those same. I don't know what you call them, but they're like poles that come up and come down. And we had them over at the old early childhood. Is that still being done? I couldn't. I couldn't tell when you guys were talking about the different pictures. If those are being put in or not.
Do you mean so that cars can drive or not drive?
Correct, because we had an incident at the old early childhood center. Where a car went through the playground. And so that was one of the things I brought up when we were going through this. That we really need to look at that because it's going to be a very crowded thoroughfare where people are coming through, picking up kids.
I believe there's a fence in Andrew.
Yeah, there's a there's a fence, but there's also like a double bike rack that's kind of in front of there as well. So it does have a lot of safeguards as far as that's concerned.
When you say fence, like what kind of fence?
I mean, it's it's a it's a like a big, I don't want to say wrought iron fence, but it's it's a fence.
If you look at the top left of that left photo, you can kind of see a black aluminum fence in the background.
This photo?
The one with the pavilion.
Was there a reason why we didn't do that? Because I thought we had a big lengthy discussion and that that was the direction that we were going to go with when we talked with Brian Lane about that. Can anybody from navigate?
You're talking about you're talking about a big pillar that can withstand a vehicle hitting it to protect the. Early childhood center. Is that right, Carrie?
Yes, there are supposed to be two or three because also the police or the fire department has to have access back there. So that was why we talked about having those. So that they could control them going up and down. So this fence that's going up, is that a fence that comes open and closes? I'm just confused on the change.
So. That idea was never, and my knowledge wasn't brought in the user group meetings or anything like that. However. We in this area where the driveline is, we do have several stop guards as far as where between where the. Actual fence for the ECC playground is. And the driveline.
So what are stop guards?
I mean, we have got those huge bike racks. They're 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 in the concrete. They're steel. I mean, we could look at doing something like that, but it would be.
Oh, they they are stuck. They're bolted to the ground.
Or they're in the concrete. They're they're not even bolted. They're.
Okay.
Footed in the concrete.
Okay.
But but it's something I'll we we can put eyes on it and just kind of make sure that that's, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I could go back to recordings and pull back up. I know Matt and I was there and so was the other gentleman. I was pretty adamant about. The cost and getting costs and coming back and we were told it was not that big of an increase. But I mean, at least the the bike racks are, you know, embedded in the concrete.
Is there anything in the driveway itself to prohibit traffic or is that just open?
So the so the driveway that runs east and west, there's nothing that prevents that. However.
No, the fire lane.
Oh, the fire. The fire lane is not open. There is a gate there.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, which would it remains locked. Basically, all the time unless there's a need to open it, which the fire department would have keys to.
And I I do have one additional question. The change order. Is the city aware that the U eight soccer field is not going to be enclosed by a fence? So technically, is that really accessible by the by the rest of McGrath? And require this change? Or is that something that they they didn't have awareness? I I just relooking at this, I see that there is a fence around the U ten soccer field. So that's why I question if the if the city was aware of that or if that would change anything.
That was a discussion that we had as well. And and they said, no, just with it just being even on the property, it would have to be something that is accessible.
Thank you.
Then Carrie, I I will look into that with Brent with HCK on the Ballard's and that that whole discussion, see what we have there. Go back to you.
Thanks. Any other questions about our construction program projects here? Any other questions about the change order that we will need to vote on here as well?
Just that once we get that information, I think it would not be a bad idea for even us individually as board members. To send some letters to planning and zoning and the city because I think it's something that they need to be aware of. You know, that. You know, we need to watch all of our taxpayers' dollars. I feel like they should have to pay for half since we were already having someone out there and getting ready to pour that day, but that's just me.
It is. It is unfortunate and frustrating, right? That's how I feel. All right, well, we do need to vote on the change order. So all in favor of the new ADA compliant sidewalk, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Right, that is approved.
Okay, thank you, Matt and Joe. Appreciate your time tonight.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
We are next going to turn it over to Dr. Zagora for her K twelve science curriculum presentation for approval.
All right, thank you. And just correct me if I'm wrong. We're presenting tonight. The board will vote on this next month, correct?
Yes.
Okay, okay, so just a very quick overview because there are no major changes. This is I'm presenting to you the science curriculum and materials recommendation for board approval next month. You can go ahead and click to the next slide. As a reminder, our curriculum cycle, we are on a seven year cycle. So every seven years, these content areas come up for revision. And so the this science revision actually occurred last spring. So immediately after school was out, the curriculum writers got to task and worked on revising and rewriting the the science curriculum K through twelve. So most of that work was done in late May, early June. And then just tweaked throughout this school year when the the curriculum committees had time to come together on some of those CIA days. So twenty four, twenty five is the revision. We will be adopting new materials for the start of next school year. So fully implementing that new curriculum in the twenty five, twenty six school year. Next slide. Here's where you can find that curriculum so that on the public landing page for the embark program, the science curricula are all in one section. And all of those that are being presented to you tonight are for review over the course of the next few weeks are marked as pending twenty twenty five BOE approval. As a reminder to the board, this is the last year that we are entering new curriculum into the embark program. We will be over the course of the next several months, looking at how we can take the curriculum out of embark. And house it somewhere so that it is still publicly accessible to our community. But we moving forward will be actually doing our curriculum writing in a Google format, which then we will house in a Google Drive and make that visible to our community. And so as you click through embark and and go into those courses. You'll see that it it may take you a few clicks to get there, but you should be able to see those units, how the standards are aligned. Our goal moving forward and when I'm presenting this to you next year with our ELA curriculum is that we will have. A a much more user friendly, visible representation of what the curriculum is so that you can truly see how that curriculum spans K through twelve. What a year and a course looks like and have the mapping just a little more or more visually friendly to you all to get a good overview of our curriculum. Next slide. So this is a simple presentation to you because there are no major changes. So since science curriculum was last revised in the previous cycle, there have been no changes in standards at the state level. And so we haven't had to do any significant reorganization of our curriculum or reprioritization. There have been no major course changes. Outside of what I came to you in December with the new robotics course that will be housed within the science department at the high school. But that's the only major change. Otherwise, it was just tweaking of how to organize some of those standards within two units. And fortunately, here in St. Louis, we have access to a wonderful curriculum resource, which I'll talk about with the next slide here. Our material selection. So we will continue in kindergarten through eighth grade to use the MYSI curriculum. MYSI is developed by the Institute for School Partnership through Washington University. I will say that it is one of the best curriculum resources I have ever seen in a couple of decades of public education. Because it is locally developed. MYSI taps the expertise of classroom teachers. They invite classroom teachers from the districts that use MYSI every year to pilot new units, to give feedback on new units. It is extremely intuitive for teachers. It is highly engaging for students. It is very tightly aligned to Missouri learning standards and what the priority standards are in science. And so we are very, very fortunate to have that partnership. We do purchase the the resource. It's not free, but we've been using that since twenty twenty and we are going to continue using that. Through our next curriculum cycle, if the board approves that next month. And one of the wonderful things about the MYSI curriculum resource is that it is not static. And so when we adopt it, we adopt the units that currently are available. But the MYSI and WashU partnership are always evolving and adapting. And so every year there are new iterations. I think some of them are on version seven. Sometimes it's the same unit and they just revise and tweak it based on feedback from teachers. Sometimes they replace units that maybe have gotten a little bit stale with some new ones that cover the same standards, but are new content and more engaging. And it also ensures for our students that as they stay with us kindergarten all the way through eighth grade, that they're not getting. I my my go to, my joke here is always the water cycle. They're not learning the water cycle ten times in eight years. They are learning those standards and they show up differently as they spiral throughout kindergarten through eighth grade. So I'm excited. The teachers love it. They're very excited to continue using it. At the high school level, there is no MYSI for high school, but at a high school level where we've got our our content experts. Our high school courses have selected some of them, a combination of hardcover text and digital programs. They reviewed a number of options from the major publishers and then including those that we offer for advanced college credit. Sometimes there are different publishers that we invite to to share materials to review for our upper level courses. And then our teachers also, they're constantly supplementing with resources that are current and engaging. And then this is also our opportunity to refresh some of our equipment that we use in our high school classrooms. And so this cycle, we will be replacing our high school microscopes. And actually, the microscopes that we have are going to be passed down to our middle school, so they'll be taking those to use at middle school. And then we're also planning to update some of our LabQuest interface equipment. And so these are the tools that plug into the Chromebooks, but then have various sensors that can be attached that we use in our labs in high school. So it may be, you know, temperature sensors, pressure sensors, things like that, that are are. Really very real life for what students would be using if they end up working in a a lab of some kind. But also give us quick data that they can then use to hit some of those data standards to evaluate their labs and and. Take those measurements and draw conclusions from them. So any questions about the science curriculum?
Ronnie, I do have a question regarding AP classes or college credit related. As as the cycle of reevaluating our curriculum progresses every year or so. Is that the point in which that conversation comes up? Like, how do we start to take advantage of those other opportunities? Do they need to go through the curriculum review?
Yeah, that's a great question. So I would say no, I don't think they have to go. I would never want to wait six or seven years to introduce a new course just because that's when the course is on cycle. And I think, you know, the the robotics course is a great example, even if this were not the science curriculum adoption year. That that course proposal would still be one that we would review. So the AP versus advanced credit, I mean, advanced credit is always dependent on the the level of education of the instructors. We are very fortunate in Brentwood that we have a lot of high school teachers that have master's degrees in their content area. That's what allows us to offer so many courses for college credit. Because the this the standard is pretty high in the state of Missouri of who's able to teach those. AP courses, we can add at any time. It requires that the teacher undergo a training, a summer training that certifies them to teach that AP course. And so one thing that we're doing now, as we head into next year as part of our our six, twelve kind of mapping out our pathways. Is we're looking at what are all the courses we have on the table, getting feedback from our community of what would they like to see? And then really making sure that we are not watering down our own options for students by offering too many. Make sure we're offering the right things at the right time. And so as we do that across the board in all of our content areas, six through twelve, that'll definitely be part of that conversation of. Where do we want to beef up maybe some AP offerings? Where do we have some great dual credit offerings? I think our high school staff, our counselors, our administrators, our teachers do a great job of educating our parents of. Why is it that we have all these dual credit and fewer AP courses? What's the benefit of these dual credit courses? I'm sure those of you that have had his high school students go through Brentwood High School know the value of accumulating a lot of college credits at low cost. And it's still a really rigorous and high level of education that we're offering our students. So so the short answer is is no, we don't have to wait for the curriculum cycle to evaluate those things. That'll be ongoing and something that I'm excited to do next year with all of our content areas.
I would just like to offer that I would love to see us educating and providing that same clarity to the middle school families. I think when it comes to attrition, they are actually more important to understand because.
I agree. Yes.
And I can vouch that the college.
And I can vouch that the college credit courses are very beneficial. And, you know, I think this discussion comes and goes every year. But there are some AP classes that are not counted at universities. And I hear from parents whose kids did both and had kids that stayed in Brentwood and went other places. And I've never heard, I'm not saying it doesn't happen, but I have not heard a story yet where a college credit course has not been accepted. You know, my daughter went into college. She was a second semester sophomore when she left Brentwood her freshman year. That's a huge savings.
Huge.
Yeah.
Great. That was wonderful information. And I like that we're going to a Google Doc format because every year when these come up and we have to go through and look at what is being offered and get details on all of our courses. It is a little tedious. So bringing that more in-house with some more control and details for the community is going to be wonderful next year. Thank you for that reminder.
Thank you.
Do we have any microscopes at the middle school that can go to the elementary school? I'm excited that we are, you know, recycling and reusing.
That's a good question. I I don't know off the top of my head. I will say one of the perks of the MICEI program is that they send over kits with all of the supplies and materials and equipment that we need for the units that we do in K through five. And the reason that we we add those microscopes at middle school is that while we do the MICEI units, there are other units that are not MICEI at middle school. At elementary, all of the science units are MICEI. So the supplies and equipment do come with them. But that's a great question. I mean, if we can repurpose anything, I'm all for it and giving teachers access to things that they could use to engage students. So I'll ask that question.
Okay, are we ready to move on? Next up, we have Matt Norrit with the ECSE agreement.
Sure. Thank you. Each year, we have we place in front of you all as a board recommendation to accept our partnership agreement with special school district to provide early childhood special education services through our early childhood program. We receive a certain amount of reimbursement participating in that program based on the number of students that qualify for IEPs and also for a percentage of the square footage for the utilities and some of the other consumables. This is a renewal. Typically, we get this a little bit earlier in the year. So we apologize for the the lack of timeliness with this with this agreement this year. I do want to thank Ms. Trevina Hotsteller for working with us to try to help SSD to get this to us. Without her help, I don't know that we would have gotten this at the same as soon as we did. We did put this, we did table this from, or we did recommend holding off on this agreement from last month until this month, while we did review some of the reimbursables on this. But we are in agreement with the amounts recommended for reimbursement and the percentages that are being used in the attachment of this agreement. How we are representing presenting this item with the recommendation for approval.
I make a motion to approve the agreement to reimburse SSD for 2425 as outlined.
So one, one second, they're they're, they will reimburse us. I'm sorry if I wasn't clear on that. This is SSD is will reimburse Brentwood School District for costs incurred.
Okay, so I'll make a motion for the 2425 agreement to reimburse partner districts for ECSE costs between SSD and Brentwood School District.
Second.
Great discussion. Okay. Okay, well, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Any opposed? Yeah, I think we're good. Thank you.
I got on that too quickly. I apologize. Thank you.
We are just excited. Normally, this is like a September agenda item. So we're really excited. It was, there's a lot of, there's a lot going on around everywhere. So we are excited to get this taken care of. And thanks to Matt for doing his due diligence to make sure that the numbers were accurate and reflective of the services we provide. So thank you for going the extra mile on that. The next up is the accepting tuition students. We did want to circle back around to this conversation. It says it's an action item, but actually, the action would be in changing the policy. So I just need kind of a nod from the board to draft a policy if we do want to change it. In the weekend update, I shared with you the research that we had done on those neighboring districts that do accept tuition paying students. Outside of Clayton, if you'll remember, those whose policy allows for tuition paying students, nobody sees more than, you know, a handful at most that take them up on that. A handful is actually a lot for most of the districts. Many of them have never actually seen it be used before. And so again, outside of Clayton, this is not something that would be a moneymaker for us. I think it's it's something that if we want to change the policy, it could provide opportunities. You know, my recommendation is we talked through this and we did our research that I put in the weekend update would be to change the language perhaps to allow for students who have been previously enrolled in the Brentwood School District to pay tuition. We already allow seniors to stay if their families would move. We allow them to stay actually without paying tuition to finish their senior year. But this would allow families that if they're moving their, you know, sophomore year, they're, you know, to stay and pay tuition to maybe stay until a national, a more natural transition if they are interested. So this is just something. There's a lot also going on. This is, this is not open enrollment. This is not tied to open enrollment. But there are other things going on in the state. So this tuition rate, again, it would be the 24,000 that we said at the last board meeting. So we can't, that's what we would have to charge. But that, what I just need to know from the board is direction of I, we can have, we can tweak the policy and bring it to our policy meeting in March. It would just be helpful as we go into registration to know if that is something. Again, I do not foresee us having any takers, but if we are going to make the change in the policy, it would be good to make that change as we go into enrollment and registration season. And we can, you know, draft up the language and have that ready for the March policy meeting.
I was trying to reread your thing as you were talking. Had a question. What if we have a student who is in the the VIC program? Or which program is it that like if they're in elementary, they can't go to middle school? Because they're going from a building to a building, they'd have to go back to their district if their district is now.
That doesn't, yeah, that doesn't exist anymore. That was with the Normandy transfers and the and the students from Riverview Garden. When they got, they gained back their accreditation, students were only allowed to stay until a natural transition as part of the transfer law. So that was something that we couldn't control. We had the same conversation in my, the district I was in at the time. We didn't have the ability to do anything at that point. Because we also at that point had a policy that we couldn't do tuition. This would allow, if that case was happening, if people wanted to pay the tuition, they could have if we had the policy stating that. Right now, our VIC students, they're able to stay. The our VIC students will be with us until graduation or until they would choose to to leave the program. But they they're allowed to stay through graduation. So it wouldn't necessarily, they wouldn't need it. But again, like I said, really, the the main families that it would impact would be families that perhaps were moving or having some sort of transition if they would choose to want to to pay the tuition to stay. Again, based on the research, I don't foresee us having a large, so I don't, we don't need to belabor this. But if we do want to change it, it has been something we've talked about. I think it is good to revisit policies. If we want to keep it the same, because there's other changes happening in the in the future, or there may be other changes happening in public education, I am also fine with that. But I do want us to hopefully revisit and get a little direction on what we need to do next so that we can have that ready to go as we start enrollment and registration in March.
Have we had, Amy, have we had any parents reach out and ask, you know, if they are moving? If that is, if this is a possibility for them to stay or?
Kate may know a little bit more. We get people that ask about attending Brentwood. I don't necessarily know if, yeah, I don't know if they're asking if they're moving. We have had, we've actually had staff members ask if they're not working here anymore, can their kids still stay here? If they're, that's happened twice since I've been here. Now, whether or not they would have chosen to pay a tuition rate, I don't know. But they they have asked that. Kate, I don't know if you've gotten any calls that give you that level of detail or.
No, no, the calls I get tend to be from people in other districts who want their children to go here, even though they're not going to be living in the Brentwood district.
Okay. I think it makes sense to, you know, at least start the conversation about opening it up to current students who parents may be moving and they want to stay, stay in Brentwood and offering tuition as an opportunity there. I think if we opened it up any further, I would, I would want a little bit clearer of maybe a, lack of better word, a business plan. You know, if we do want to start targeting tuition paying students, what does that look like? How are we going to market this? How, what is the cost going to be for us to go through and do that? And then what is our goal? How many students are we going to be targeting? If we, if we decide to go down that path, I think that's a lot more, I think a lot more discussion needs to be had if we go down that path. But I think at least opening it up to talk about existing students staying if the if if the situation allows for them to pay for tuition.
I, I agree.
Yeah, I feel like this is an easy step right now. There's so much unknown with open enrollment and things. I would, like I said, I feel this feels like a natural, easy start because some of those other things are going to be out of our hands and to, I don't want to say out of our hands, to put a lot of work into something that may completely change anyway because of changes in law. Not that we won't still have to to address some of the things you just mentioned if the law changes, but it 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 takes care of some of that for us, if you if you will. So to to put a lot of time, energy and effort into something that in a year could look, the face of it could look, not even in a year and six months or so, it could look so vastly different. This feels like a good, natural, kind of just a little baby, baby step, if you will, it'll open and then does allow families, because right now, we would have to turn them away if they asked. And this would allow us to not have to. And, you know, again, it's still a pretty nice. It's a chunk of money. So I don't know how many would take us up on it, but I think it's good to at least be able to offer.
You know, parents move for a lot of reasons. And, you know, somebody who's a going to be a senior in high school, I can tell you for my personal experience in high school, we moved my junior year and I would have loved to have had that opportunity to do so, something like that. So I think it makes a lot of sense, at least to have that option out there for existing students.
Yeah, I'm in agreement as well. I think it's a good plan moving forward.
So we're good with that. I'll, I'll work on on the language of that and bring that to the policy meeting and we'll look at the policy together. And then that's when we'll, we'll officially approve it if that's, if that works. Did you have something?
Couple of questions.
Yeah.
Um, if if we're going to do that, are the tuition number we set at 24,000 or whatever that was? Understanding was is that that meant we couldn't charge more than that. It seems like that price might be prohibitive no matter what we do. And if we are going to be in the world where we allow, you know, even a narrow slice of them, it seems like that has to be adjusted to a number that actually makes sense. Because I think it's, it's, I think it's too high for people to reasonably consider it. And then I guess what I'm thinking, and I think we need to keep talking about this. And, you know, if we're going to go so far as to to allow for these, these hypothetical kids from families who are moving, seems like, and if we don't think there's really going to be a big demand anyway, it seems like, why don't we just open it up and see what happens? And I think with, you know, and something you alluded to, Amy, with the moves for open enrollment, I think, you know, that's going to, a lot of stuff's going to become beyond our control to some degree. And the more we know about how to do these things when that kind of thing happens, I think it's the better for us. So I, you know, I I think we have to, I think we have to analyze this a lot further. So I think it probably makes sense to to do what you're suggesting, Amy. For now, I wonder about the price and I think I need to understand, like, we need to understand, can we just change that at any time? I mean, we don't want to change it at any, you know, just willingly, but I think it needs to be adjusted to something that makes sense in the market, I think. Or if it's going to be foisted upon us by state law, is it in our benefit to have it a high number that, you know, then, you know, that the other district has to pay, but then that's going to depend on how that's all funded. And, you know, and that's all up in the air as well. So I I guess what I'm, I'm rambling and saying this is a complicated issue. I think it doesn't seem like there's a big downside as long as we have a price that makes sense and as long as we have control over class sizes to open it up and see what happens. Not much will happen, you suspect, which I suspect you're right. But I was struck by what you said. How many kids are actually taking, have taken Clayton up on it?
Yeah.
Will you remind me of that number?
Didn't you say it was something like 60?
It was like 35. Yeah, I thought it was 60, but it's 47. But that has increased, I guess, the 47 is like one of their higher numbers. So they're at 35 at the secondary level and they're at the remaining 12 or at the elementary level. So.
And their tuition, can you, do you, off the top of your?
Theirs is, I think, around 18,000. Matt, if I'm wrong, I think their height, their secondary is about 18,000.
Yeah, it's right at 19. Sorry.
Okay, thanks.
We did, we shared the comparatives with the school board as one of our updates a couple.
Yeah, that's, I remember you saying 19 and, you know, that's, I'm sure they put some thought into that and looking at the prices that are the, the private schools are charging these days, which I don't really know.
Yeah.
Sounds, that probably sounds in the ballpark for some of them.
Yeah, Clayton's comparison looks like it's based on private school and they write a memo with it, which states they want, they don't want to be as high as the private education, but they're comparing themselves to private ed.
Right.
So how did we, forgive me for not remembering, how did we land at the 24,000? That's what it takes to not lose money?
That was the instructional that costs, right?
Yeah, that's the instructional cost based on the DESI formula that they give where you're able to take out your debt service and take out, I'm using the right words, right? Bonding and, yeah, your debt and capital. And so you're able to take those both out. And so that's how you determine the instructional. It doesn't actually cost us $24,000 a student to to educate, especially if you're putting a cap on the amount of students in, so that you're not hiring an additional teacher. So if you're only, which is what we would obviously do, is that you wouldn't accept students beyond a certain capacity. So again, I I agree with Keith. I think that there's, you know, there's a lot more to this and there's a lot of layers that we can peel back and then could, that we are absolutely can continue to talk about. But until we change, like, I guess for me, it's kind of like, do we just dip our toe in to start this piece? And we can talk about other pieces or, and we don't have to by any stretch. It's just a matter of, if we don't do it in the next month or so, then it's okay. It'll just be a different school year. I mean, because people are going to be wondering. They're going to be wanting to do this digging as they're looking at schools for next school year.
I think the part that I need clarity on, I feel like I'm missing something because I'm not aligned with everyone when it comes to the price that Desi says that we can set. If our goal is to open it up and we already have the teachers and we're not shifting, like, really, we already have resources that can serve more students. Why wouldn't we, in this practice score round with a very limited demographic, why wouldn't we match Clayton's price or even go under it very slightly? If we're trying to feel this out and see who is interested, that's not the net we're casting, but it does make it more affordable. I I think at a price tag of 24,000, it's cost prohibitive and it's kind of like a silly exercise.
I agree with that completely.
Yep.
And and do we have, this is a little bit off track, but it was, it is on track. But I remember years ago, because of the these legal issues about having to take transfer students from unsupporting districts or something like that, we built in some class size limitations, I thought, into our policies. And I can't remember for sure if we did that. I guess in. for sure if we did that. I guess in any event, we need to make sure that we have a, we have control over that, that we have the right to say no if, you know, if all of a sudden a bunch of people sign up, which we don't think is going to happen, but we need to make sure that that's taken care of as well. And then, um, and I agree completely with what Katie just said. I think, it, it's, it's an abstract, uh, hypothetical exercise if we're charging more than anybody else in the county, no matter who they are. I think it doesn't make any sense. And so we're not going to learn anything from it, I don't think. But, but then what do you set? You know, I think you have to go in that ballpark of what Clayton's doing. And, uh, and again, I'm sorry, I'm rambling again. Um, so I think it needs some, needs some thought. And, and okay, a question for Matt as, and Katie asked this question, that calculation of twenty-four thousand was based upon some formula that the, the state puts on us, but I thought I understood that that's kind of a, we can set any number we want. If we wanted to set it based upon per people expenditure, that's what that was. But if we want to set a different number like Clayton did, we can do that. Am I correct about that?
So we could, uh, the board could approve a lower rate. They just can't approve a higher rate than the amount that we authorized.
That's what I, that's what I thought you said. And so, so we could, we could change that next month if we wanted.
So what we did during the, the last meeting was we, we were required by policy to establish that tuition rate before February first.
Got you. Does that have to be the rate that applies no matter what for the next school year or can it still be changed?
My understanding is that's the rate that we would be establishing for the coming year. Now we could revise that next year going into the twenty-seven, twenty-eight school year. But the rate that we established and the board authorized should be the rate that we have.
Okay.
Now, we could look into if we could revise that. We, we did that as a method to meet our policy and meet our policy requirements.
Right. And I thought, I thought I understood it was a cap in essence and so.
So that the calculation is the cap, the, when the board authorized setting the rate, that's the rate that we establish for the following year. So the board, the amount that I presented, the board could establish a rate that's lesser than that amount.
And if we changed a policy, then could it go into effect immediately? Or would we still have to wait another year? Because I'm hearing from Amy that, you know, if we're going to do this, we need to do it sooner than later or we're into another school year.
So maybe I'm misunderstanding, but what, what I'm understanding is, one is we're talking about a tuition rate that is just, it's just mechanics. Where we're setting it because policy requires us to. And that's really a throwback to, uh, Normandy and Riverview Gardens sending kids due to unaccreditation. What Dr. Zelensky is referring to is allowing or accepting students, uh, paying tuition under very narrow circumstances.
But what I think Carrie's asking, and this is the important part, because again, if, if we wait a year, we wait a year. I, I honestly, I mean, to your point, Katie, I don't disagree with you that this could all be an effort in futility. If the number is so far outside that nobody's going to take us up on it. And this was, you know, so if, if we can't adjust that twenty-four thousand at this point for next school year, that's fine. It'll give us a year to work out all of the other things that Ryan mentioned and, you know, Keith had talked about, but I, at least we'll know the timeline better than we did this year as we're trying to kind of work through this as a conversation that was brought up, you know, the summer, we wanted to revisit it. We wanted to see kind of where we wanted to land on all of that. But if, I mean, again, I, I, I don't want to say I don't want to belabor it because I think it's an important conversation. Because I do think that there are going to be changes in the near future that are going to have us having these conversations around marketing, around bringing in students, about knowing our cap for our grade levels. To your point, this is all work we're going to need to be doing. So it's not, it's not, I don't want to make it sound like it's an effort in like futility to do it now. I just don't want us to put it on ourselves where we have to get it done in a month because we're trying to rush it versus doing it right and well over the course of time that we need to do it. So I guess the, the short question that I have, Matt, is if we wanted to do it for next year, could we go back and refine that $24,000 or is that set for the next school year? And this is a conversation for us to work on over the course of this year, doing all the things that we've kind of talked about at this point. Otherwise we, even if we changed it, it would still have to be the twenty-four thousand.
So I would reach out to MSBA and I can do that this week because we've met our policy requirement. Now, it doesn't necessarily, in, in my opinion, mean that we can't establish a new rate. The, the point of the law and the, and the MSBA policy that's aligning to RSMO is that we have a tuition rate for the coming year. And that we're not, you know, adjusting that tuition rate, um, while kind of like, uh, an ad hoc basis. So, um, I would, I would prefer to reach out to MSBA to ask for that clarification.
We can do that.
You were right. We did talk about numbers and classes, but it would be interesting to see if we specified those numbers in a policy. I don't know that we ever did.
I, I don't think, I've looked at our policies when we were looking at the kindergarten numbers in McGrath and I don't think we wrote down hard numbers in the policies that I saw, but I could have missed it. Um, so we can do some more. I, we can reach out to MSBA around that piece, do some digging around, um, what is reasonable and do some research. I mean, we already have the comparables. It's not hard. We can, you know, present what we think is a reasonable uh, tuition rate if we want to change it and add it to that very limited scope of, of student.
I would really like to do that. I think that would be a really positive step towards feeling out what it's like. And this is such a narrow demographic and just letting that message get out there that at a more affordable tuition, I, I think twenty-four thousand's inappropriate, but I, we could find an appropriate tuition for our narrow demographic as step one, I think that we should.
So I will do that work. And again, it'll be the same thing that I'll bring the draft to the March fourth. We don't approve anything at that March policy meeting, but I'll, I'll show it, um, and have some of this information there and we can have, continue to have a dialogue around that with, um, the other policies. If that's okay, if that is okay with the group, um, you don't have to vote on anything tonight, but if that's okay, we'll do a little bit on our end to put together some proposals, uh, with numbers of kind of the class size range that we're looking at. We'll look at tuition rate and then we'll just talk through that, uh, with what the draft policy would look like, um, as part of the policies. And then we can decide from there what we want to do.
I, I think that makes a lot of sense. I just, I, just a word of caution, I think. I, I certainly don't want to throw something in just to, you know, throw something in to see if it sticks on the wall. I mean, that, that, that doesn't really, I, I don't think that does us a lot of good. Uh, also from a timing perspective, you know, a lot of the, um, you know, private schools, uh, the, those folks that students that would potentially come to Brentwood, I think that, that ship has effectively sailed already. So I think it makes a lot of sense for us to do maybe a little bit more due diligence, really do a deeper dive into some market analytics to see exactly, you know, what appropriate, uh, tuition could be as opposed to just shooting from the hip. Just, I, I, I just, I think more due diligence and getting a good process down. Um, and understanding what the cost would be for us to market and give students tours and all of those things that we may not be considering right now just because we want to offer this. But there is a cost that, that is associated with it. An indirect cost, an opportunity cost.
I think that certainly makes sense, especially if we open it up to the general public. If we're just talking about our current students that might have an opportunity to stay, it is, I think we have a little more wiggle room.
Oh, for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree. A hundred percent. Yep.
Great. I think, um, yeah, coming back for our policy meeting with some more information would be great.
Perfect. All right. Thank you. That is all I have for the superintendent reports.
Okay, thanks. Okay, that brings us down to Board of Education. Um, any MSBA delegate reports, Keith?
I had nothing in particular right now. I guess the, um, yeah, there's nothing in particular right now.
I think, and maybe it'll show, is there, March eleventh is the possible day where you go down to Jeff City? Maybe that's a public school day.
Yeah, I'm planning.
It's on the agenda.
Okay, perfect.
I am planning to go to that. I don't know if anybody else is.
Um, it's possible. Keith and I have gone several times, um, and it's been great to kind of hear what's happening in Jeff City. I think it's important this year to be present and visible if we can't make it down there. Just trying to stay up to date. I know Amy and Matt can give us more information throughout this legislative kind of cycle.
One thing they have at that, that's that they have, it's the advocacy day, but they also have this student showcase thing where different schools set up little stands. It's in the Capitol and, you know, different things that kids are doing at different schools. It's kind of, it's kind of a fun thing to look at. Maybe someday we could do that.
I was going to say, we had catalyst there. Keith and I bumped into each other last year. I had.
Oh, that's right.
Not quite, I was not quite at Brentwood yet. I'd been named superintendent. So, uh, but I, we were there with our catalyst students from LeDuc Clayton in Brentwood. Um, so yeah, we were able to highlight them. I will say advocacy, um, for public schools, uh, I don't want to say they don't listen to superintendents, but there's an assumption that we have an ulterior motive. So community members and board members, uh, it is wonderful. We also remember have a Brentwood alum serving in the house, uh, with Ray Reed. He is extraordinarily, I, uh, the Ed plus uh, person, Chris Gaines, who's in charge of the Ed plus group here in St. Louis, uh, knew that Ray went to Brentwood within the first five minutes of meeting him and told me that that man is very proud of his Brentwood roots. So it's a wonderful thing. So you'll, if you do, if you are able to go, I'm hoping to be able to go, um, it, it'll be great to stop by and, and see him as well in his office. He's, he has opened his door to us multiple times and, um, sends me emails and texts to keep me informed of what's going on there. So.
I'd like to do that. Usually none of them want to talk to me. I guess there's something about my.
Well, I think Ray, I will talk to you. I think you're going to have a friend. He's a freshman, a freshman member of the house. So.
Good.
Cool.
That's great. And then Mark is not here for an SSD update. So let him move us on to board committee updates.
I don't have anything on the finance and facilities.
Okay, teaching and learning. Crickets, okay.
I sense, so sorry, my camera's not working. So, um, yeah, we haven't met since the last board meeting.
Okay, uh, student experience.
We will be scheduling our next meeting soon, um, in the next probably month or so. The spring break kind of throws us off on meetings with parent teacher conferences and evenings. So I know community engagement is the same. They're, they're getting it scheduled right now.
Yeah.
Like Tony is, yeah.
Well, so it has been, yeah, we're, we're moving along. Um, all right. So, and then upcoming events. This is where we can tell Kate what we will be doing. Um, uh, school board, our candidate forum is March third, six thirty, is it at the, in the lecture hall?
Yes.
Okay. So where our regular board meetings, when we're not meeting on Zoom, that is where the forum will be. Be great to have, um, our three candidates there and that'll be monitored by League of Women's Voters. Hope to get lots of the community there. Policy meeting that we've talked about, we've got some additional policies we'll get to look over on the fourth. Advocacy Day, March eleventh, and then just our regular board business meetings starting after spring break. Um, and then if anyone wants to go to the MSBA advocacy day, just let Kate know and she can get us registered for that. Kate, do you want to know by a certain date?
Um, I, it's open, but, um, I guess maybe in the next couple of weeks, just to make sure they can, you know, they have our names on the list and everything.
Okay, that sounds great. And senior citizens brunch on Earth Day. Great. Uh, okay, um, and that is it for our meeting tonight. If we could get a motion to just adjourn, we've already had our closed session this evening. So.
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Okay. Um, usually I just say roll call and we say yes, then we're in closed session, but go ahead, Kate. Do we need you to do that?
Yeah, Mark Cicero, Brian Dodson.
Yes.
Brian Flynn.
Yes.
Keith Revenberg.
Yes.
Katie Spall.
Yes.
Lindsay Spencer.
Yes.
Carrie Trossell.
Yes. All right. Well, thank you everyone for zooming in with us tonight. Um.
Yeah, I appreciate your flexibility tonight. I don't think it's snowed since we've been on here, so we could totally have been in person, but thank you. Let's hope it's this easy to call tomorrow morning. So, um, I will hopefully, uh, see everybody in Brentwood tomorrow.
Absolutely.
Can we thank Tony for setting this up now since he, since it worked?
Yes, Tony is great.
Good job, Tony.
Well done, Tony.
Thank you very much.
All right, everyone. Have a great night and.
You too, guys. Thank you. Bye.
Bye.